Okay, all right, we'll bring the meeting to order. At 7:38. And all lives are glad to leave, please.
Glad to leave this is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so do a roll call.
Flitz.
Here.
Conan.
Here.
Deleke.
Present.
And Patterson here.
Okay. So how about comments on the agenda? Hearing done, approval as submitted.
So.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. How about minutes from April 4?
BH. BH, you're very lucky.
Took me a second. That's why I have to call.
I did too, I'm like.
Well.
I move that the minutes be approved.
As submitted?
As submitted, okay.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll move out. Okay, so we have a public hearing at 22600 Main Street. It's a land split of a special approval land use property. So we'll go into a public hearing at this time? A motion to do that?
You do not.
Yes. We always have to on the village. We always still do. I'm trying to contradict you. Our lawyer makes us do it for the village.
Okay.
I move that we go into.
Public hearing?
Public hearing.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So this is property known as Village Rehabilitation and Care Community. So right now it's a 26 acre. And new owners and for some reason they want to split the property. So any comments from the audience? Okay. Hearing, no comments from the audience? A motion to.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Correct. Yeah. Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And David Staves.
I don't say David would abstain, I don't know. We have over five, right?
Mm-hmm, oh, three is good. So. We talked about this property at the last meeting and about the easements and recorded. I see it's nothing in the paperwork that we've got, any type of new documentation on the easements.
You guys have a copy of these? There's things in place. This is pretty.
Oh, this is.
Oh, this is over.
Are they done with you?
Yeah. So.
Two steps.
I would say at this point in time until we get some documentation that we table this right term.
Since I wasn't here at the last meeting, would you mind refreshing?
Okay. So you have a drawing of it?
I do.
Okay. So. The big thing was to get an easement because all the utilities encroach from one property to the other one. So i.e. gas, water, sewer, sanitary storm, Edison, everything goes from one to another. So and the, I always get them mixed up. Detention pond is all in one parcel. So they have to have easements between the two parcels to facilitate the.
Share all the utilities.
Yeah, traveling of other people's property to get to their utility.
So what you're looking for from the engineer as far as an agreement?
Well, not the engineer, but from.
From the applicant?
From the applicant, yeah.
Is a more thorough description of the easements than.
Well, actually, they have to have the easements recorded at the McComb County Register of Deed and show proof that they've done that and the easements have to be approved by the engineer.
Because you could end up having two different owners there.
Correct. Yes, after you split the property.
Excuse me. If you split the property, that's very possible, it'd happen.
Yeah, no, that's good. I mean, that takes care of my concern as well was that we have adequate, an adequate access easement to this parking lot specifically.
Mm-hmm.
And then as Roe pointed out, all of the utilities across the whole site. Okay, good.
Yeah.
And this fulfills our obligation though of, you know, informing the public and if they have a complaint, anybody in there near them could be in here, you know, expressing their concerns. So that's really the reason for the public hearing and we've met that about.
Well, the public hearing was to hear concerns about updating the special use permit that you took action on, I believe in 2013.
A few times.
A few times.
Yeah.
Most recently.
Yeah. Okay. So. Okay, so we're going to wait on the easements, the recorded easements and the easements to be gone over by the engineer and our legal department before we take any action. So we could take action, but there's just too much. If we took an action, it would be contingent on everything else falling into place. I think with as much needs to fall into place, we would not be prudent in doing so. Everybody in agreement with that one?
Yes.
Okay. So moving along, so now we're to number eight on our agenda. Site plan review for order of the Duncan Blake proposed property on Holton Street. So what's the previous item on the agenda? We talked about this last month and we did a public hearing for a zone. Did we do this last month? Was it the month before? Anyway, previously. So now we're getting down to the final stages. So one of the things that was a. Thing of concern was the parking places. Does everybody have a letter from the Duncan agencies and Duncan properties? About requests for additional parking? Anybody have any comment on? Have you seen this?
They was looking at McKenna's when I was looking at it, because they just maxed out their numbers. He wasn't asking for going above the ordinance.
Well, in last time, at our last meeting, they were.
The previous plan called for 28.
Yeah.
Okay, so they reduced, you reduced the number of spaces?
24.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
So 24 is within the ordinance.
Okay, go on.
Then we don't need the letter.
We thought that there was just a minimum or maximum. We didn't know there's a range.
Okay, yeah, there's a minimum and a maximum, 24 is a maximum.
Perfect.
So you're perfect. One more step for you.
In the process.
So this is the current drawing?
Is the updated, is that the updated one that we delivered?
No.
You got an old one?
I don't know.
Can you say?
It's the one that's in my current folder.
You think being the chair, they give you a new one? We can share.
Is there a date on this?
I think you have a pen, what are you looking at? It's this little 22nd.
Yeah. Where do you see the dates? That's why I don't have a date.
Oh, there.
So is this it?
Yes.
Okay. This is the time. Well, I think a whole bunch of these. Does everybody have one? Why come I don't have one of these?
There it is, there it is. Who are these for? Those are pretty good, they're all the. That's all.
Down to the old.
That's what they said.
Okay.
Was the engineer able to do a review on it as well? No, not to do. One of the original ones, it's like this.
I haven't heard anything from him.
Yeah, I'm looking at the data, this one is on right after the date of the last one, the next day.
So when was this one submitted?
This was a week ago.
Okay.
This is, this is after the meeting that you had with Ben. When I think we addressed most of the concerns, I think there's a couple that are missed right now.
Okay.
What do you have there?
Buffer zone and the easement.
Okay.
However, Roe brought a second one up about the water.
Yeah.
And you've noticed that, that's another one.
That's, that's my fault, I discussed it with Rich Berman, I didn't make sure that it was on the plan. The drains across the driveway that we discussed?
Yeah.
We talked about controlling the water on this side here, putting a drain thing and coming over here.
Right, and also Roe indicated that you have, we have a utility, we have a water line, existing water line process.
Right, we. Landowners will only get granted easements instead of removing a really good water line.
Agreed, and that's just like the other one, the split areas, the documentation.
Sure, sure.
But you can't.
For this, because this is going to do this.
I believe it's during the easement. Yeah.
Little bit of this, then moving here to the water.
So this is curb.
Mm-hmm. But they're going to take that and make that into curb blocks and sort of solid curb.
Let the water shed down and then take, carry the grass out. Or sowing whatever, whatever needs to be there.
So would you, would you put a drain underneath the entrance drive then?
Yeah, that's, when we met with Ben three weeks ago. Put a basin here and drain it over to here so this can pick it up.
So you just need some clarification on where you're going to start and end the curb?
I think from, from what I can tell, the curb needs to be in that radius for sure to protect, you know, the landscape and tearing everything up and anything you remove curb from a site like that, that's what you end up doing, making a mess.
Yeah, in the middle of a parcel.
You know, and even if you thought curb was a better idea, we could create three or four spillways on it to take the water out in a little more controlled fashion. Bumper blocks are always great until you have a winter in Michigan and then they end up a pile.
That's my concern is aesthetically after a while.
Well, and that's fine, as long as we got a cut through, I don't.
Yeah, we can put some spillways in there, put three or four spillways controlled.
But we're not, we're not showing any of that, that cut that we talked about.
Yeah, that's what I just said, that's not me. I forgot to check it when I got it delivered. I told our architect to put it in there. I am far from perfect then. And other than that, the photometric, I guess you said previously we didn't either, it was already being done, so we just completed it. McKenna also reviewed that as well, so look where yours is.
Yeah, our big concern is where that we have an access easement recorded. So there's no surprise there. And then the other is, you know, the landscaping along North Avenue does meet the requirements, so there's no concerns there. You as a planning commission do have the authority by the ordinance if you want to see a more substantial buffer between the parking lot and the road. You know, we talked about that when I was here a few months ago, I think. And I've also included the example from the ordinance, but that's entirely up to you to see that buffer.
What would that buffer entail?
So just low shrubs, you know, two or three feet.
Softening.
And the intent is so that anybody driving by is not just looking straight at the cars, they see some vegetation and try to soften up that landscape a little bit. So, you know, the bank to the south doesn't have that buffer there.
Yeah, it doesn't have the trees anymore, but that was, that was done years ago. Probably before this ordinance was straightened around.
Well, that's also township.
Oh.
So you don't have any jurisdiction.
Yeah.
So, I mean, my feeling is this, this site is separated from some of the more developed properties to the north. So there is that little bit of separation there, but you've made the effort to do some nice landscaping as you come into the site and so to see it along the road frontage is a fairly cost-effective way of sprucing up the side of it too.
Do you have any lights on the building?
You can't have high lights on the building, just low entry lights on the building, that would be part of the construction. The light, the lights that we have there trying to go to parking lot have to shine inward.
Okay, so if they don't have a loading zone.
That was one of the things that Roe had.
Right.
Yeah, and I was trying to tie it back into yours as well. And it went until this time, that was the first time I saw that.
I had completely forgot that he had made mention of that, that's a good point.
But I don't see it would be anything.
Okay.
It's not, it's just a utility agreement.
Water easement.
Yeah.
So the water easement, shared access easement?
So there's really two options there.
Off the front of the property.
Yeah, there's really two options, is to move that water service or provide the utility easement.
I don't think anyone wants to move it. Come on, then we said, yeah, it's not more drainage change. I remember with the landscape and planning as well, as it's. It's good. Do you think on the landscape, so what those will grow up into?
These trees.
Yeah.
As far as what, height goes?
Meaning the fact is once they grow, you're going to see right underneath.
Correct, you're going to see right underneath.
You won't see, you won't block anything at that point when they're 30 feet plus tall.
Right, and that's the, that's the reason you plant stuff that.
And then as I say, I think the numbers are going to, I mean, change a different selection.
Did you need any calculations from your engineer on the water runoff?
I don't have any.
Okay.
They're not on the plan, I certainly don't have.
So there isn't anything from? Yeah.
No, that won't surprise me too, that's what I expected them to actually really focus on.
Did Roe complete it? Did it complete review?
But Ryan's from Roe. So that.
No, McKenna, McKenna.
Or McKenna, sorry.
You're McKenna.
No, we don't have anything from Roe. Not on this new drawing. So it really wouldn't be up to Roe to do the calculations, it'd be up to whoever the applicant.
The engineer, yeah.
Yeah, so that was, that's our conversation of the last meeting. So as far as, I don't know, does mine bite off?
Nope. Please.
As far as the planning goes, the planner, why don't you kind of say what, what your thoughts are as far as from Brian from, from McKenna? I think you've kind of already stated some of them.
Yeah, I think from the first plan that we saw, you guys have been meeting the things that have been asking for it, you know, meeting the parking requirements and meeting the number of landscaping requirements and all those type of things. I have relatively few concerns and I have voiced them already. I think we do, it would be my preference to see some low landscaping up in the front. But that's up to ignition. I definitely need to see the access agreement and the utility easement.
Sure.
Now that we brought that to light, I appreciate that catch. But everything else, you know, dimensionally, the plan meets all of the requirements. I think it's a good use of the space. I really have no concerns.
Okay. So that being said, from the planner, and Brian's a professional planner, the only thing that I'm seeing is there, this is zone industrial, industrial, we talked about there's, there's required two loading zones. You don't have to have something that's specific in an area where that's designated solely for a loading zone, but you've got to show it on the drawing.
Right, and the little parking lot you said.
Yeah, and it's still not here. And the big thing is water runoff.
Okay.
So we haven't addressed that at all, other than what was on the first drawing.
Okay.
So.
Good point, I mean, you could solve some of those issues across the entranceway simply by raising the grade in the throat of.
Well, but we've kind of talked calculations on water as to how much water we've got, what are we going to do with that water? So, I mean, we can kind of come up with something, but.
Understood, but to keep it on site and then have, and then deal with your water.
Create restrictors and.
Rather than.
Well, yeah, and it, it would be really tough to keep it on site. So the only thing we want to do is to do kind of like at our meeting.
Slow it down.
Slow it down, you know, retain it a little bit. Excuse me. The only place you have a spot for a retention or detention pond is in the back, the water all runs away from that. So rather than reconfiguring your whole elevation sequence, let's just kind of go back to what we had talked about. And I think that if you do that, we can get the engineer to see our way.
Okay.
So, but I'd like to see something with a ditch in the front too. I've talked about that ditch, so that's really got to be, and then we got to make sure that the increase in water that we're putting into that is going to go through the cover that's on your shared driveway. Sound reasonable? Dave?
Yeah.
Chris, do you?
When do you want to start building?
Soon as possible.
Tomorrow is not, is not too soon. However, there are a couple of items that need to be handled here. Frank, quite frankly, as soon as we can get construction plans completed, which are probably a week or two out, and get the board to approve and, you know, we've got to get our, our drains handled and there's easements to be put in place. Those, obviously those have to be done before.
Exactly.
Before you can even dream of issuing as a permit, but.
Correct.
You know, I, I hope we're at a point where we have few enough issues that, that we can, we can take this step forward again and, you know, again, again, a couple of years are completely on me, I didn't double check them, so if you're going to yell at somebody, it's this guy.
There's no yelling, I think, as Ryan said, that, you know, the drawings come a long ways. We're really close, but there's some obstacles that really need to be done. I mean, the easement for the water line, I mean, that's not a big deal, but you know, somebody's got to draw it up, it's got to be signed, it's got to be registered, it's got to show them that there's proof of registration. And then we need the engineer to look at, and I would suggest that the engineer doesn't look at this because he's just going to have to look at it again. So we got to come up with something with that drainage, so.
So if we can design a drainage that makes, makes the commission and the engineer happy, because that's our big, that sounds like that's our biggest issue. The other, the easements are legalities that are way above my head. But the remainder is mechanics of the operation, drawing in a loading zone and designing a drainage that fits the ordinance and makes the engineers happy. With that being said, is that something that we could submit and, and have you guys approve on the fly or is it something we're going to have to wait for the next meeting for?
Well. We're basically going to, you're going to have to submit a new drawing with, with the stuff that we've talked about. The engineer's going to have to go over it and we'll have to get a review from the engineer. So, and if that can all, I don't know how fast that can happen.
Nothing happens. Nothing happens that quickly right now.
You know, so, I mean, if it happened quick, you could request a special meeting.
So the answer to my question is no. We can't approve this pending these items.
I think there's too much. Dave?
I guess so.
Christie?
Main thing is you want the water runoff.
If we don't do this, it's all going to KPEC back.
What the topography it all is anyway, it's just a matter of what speed it gets there.
Exactly, exactly, but right now, you know, it, it's all grass and there's really nothing. But now you're putting a big building and half of this property is gonna be asphalt. And if you include the building, it's probably gonna be more like sixty percent.
Absolutely.
So now we've created something that we didn't have before, so. And there is, I, I don't know how much of a grassy area that is between. It doesn't look like there's really anything. It looks like their asphalt almost goes to your.
To the property line, yeah, that's true. Well, with that being said, and completely thinking of your side and not thinking of the developer's side or the builder's side, and not being self-centered with this at all, if there, I mean, you guys still have the hammer to shut this down if the engineers don't say, say yes. I mean, the landscaping is good, the building fits the size, waters are prob, water and engineering, and you and I both know this is probably gonna take three weeks anyways. If everything else is good on this, is there a possibility to approve this thing pending these items? And then you guys know what to meet. We can send the plans out and you guys can call and say it's good. The engineer can say, hey, it's beautiful. I don't think they're insurmountable.
I don't either. Then, had the drainage things been somewhat addressed, I would probably go along with it. Or if we had something from the engineer.
Well, you don't have your easements, you know, and I still, I agree with Ryan though. I like the number, I don't care the number. I would change the designated. I wouldn't put trees and be a shrubbery in front. Something smaller that will block.
Well, the ordinance still requires the trees one way or the other.
Okay, I see. Now I was gonna make it your. What was the alternative then to do a berm?
Do a berm rather than low shrubbery.
Maybe that's what I was thinking about then. So does the ordinance say trees and berms? Trees and shrubs?
The ordinance says.
Trees.
Trees, berm, right away frontage minus your, your hard scape. And then if the planning commission recommends screening, screening for that square, it's already, it's already that, whether it's a berm or a shrubbery.
What's the commission's thought on going above and beyond the trees? Dave?
I think the trees are fine.
Christie?
Yeah, I do.
This is gonna be, this is gonna look really nice.
I totally agree. I mean, I.
This is a great addition to the community. So what kind of report do we get on the water? How do they figure that?
You get engineer, engineer calculations. Shows the flow of the water and shows engineer calculations.
So, I mean, we got some kind of drainage to the ditch that'll go up to the creek.
What, the way it's designed that we discussed the other day in the meeting, and again, it's on me, is putting, can I draw on this?
Yeah, go ahead.
Because you're gonna do it anyway. Putting, putting catch base in here and running a drain over to here. What that would do is take all this water, pick it up, slow it down, get it to the ditch, and then everything goes this way. You can't stop that.
Yeah, but then it misses the KPEC people.
Well, exactly. We're, we're picking up all of our own water. Now we can crown that up. We can crown this up. The driveway stays the same and this is a high point and everything comes this way. We've got, we've got.
That looks good to me, mate.
We've got a rip rap flow here to carry this parking lot water off.
And then you gotta take a hand of the additional water.
You want to make sure that that's small enough because that's your restrictor pipe now. And that's what the engineer's gonna tell you. Because if it's too big, they're gonna tell you to put a restrictor inside of it anyways. And those are nothing but garbage catchers. Clean those annually. So that, that's what we discussed. That's what I didn't do and there's no water calculation, so. I mean, the rest, we were asked to put downs faults on here. I think those are located on here now. They were, now I saw them. But again, we're at the commission's mercy. How easy is it to pull you together for a special meeting?
Real easy.
Is it?
Yeah.
I promise, there's only four of us. We're already showing one, so we gotta make sure at least three can make it.
You bring four tall beers and somebody's gonna beat it up.
Right.
Pretty close. So, and then there is a cost, but really I think it's just a.
Is it five hundred dollars for the special meeting?
Not a lot less.
How much is the special meeting?
I think the ordinance is three hundred dollars, but we wouldn't spend the three hundred pounds.
You got the cost of the guys. I, because I'm on the council, I don't get paid for being on this, so.
You should be. You should be safe.
And the secretary. We should, not very much.
I think you should be paid.
This is a pain in the neck.
So let me ask this. Did this plan not go to the engineer?
Oh, I can't answer that. I'm sure it did.
And you, you give this to Roe to review?
I'm sure it did go to Roe to review, but I haven't seen this. This is after our meeting, so.
You know, Becky would probably be able to answer that question, but she would probably send it to him or they talk to him.
I'm sure as soon as she got it, she sent it.
Yes.
But.
It's right in that window too.
When, when was this submitted?
Monday.
Monday of this week?
Yes.
That's probably why.
It was a week ago.
Yeah.
It would take, it would be quick for them to get their answer back too.
Yeah. But this probably went by mail?
Yeah, got there on Wednesday.
Yeah, so.
Because you have to deliver from your post office.
By mail?
I was anticipating it coming, so I made sure that Becky sent it to me. I assumed she sent it to Roe at the same time and I got mine Thursday morning.
Okay, there you go.
They get it till twelve and a half.
If you submitted it on Monday, it wouldn't went out till Tuesday's mail.
What's your name, sir?
I'm Patrick Thankier. I'm the guy that's hopefully gonna build this.
You're tied in with all the other?
I don't even want to talk about the rest of my family. They're not good people.
You know Jerry?
Jerry who? No, my sister-in-law?
The woman.
The woman at GM, yeah.
Yeah, friend of mine. I used to work with her.
Over, where?
On the fire, yeah. I've known Jerry for years.
I've known her for a couple of years now.
Isn't that married here?
No, no, that's my oldest brother. That's my oldest.
I don't know, you know?
I'm the baby of five. There's a lot of us running around.
There are a lot of inbreeding out here, so you don't know.
I don't know, but I hope not. That may explain a couple of things in our families. Does that help or hurt my cause trying to get this thing pushed through?
No, you're doing fine.
Thank you, thank you.
But I gotta tell you, like you said, if there's any complaints to complain to you or yell at you, I'm really more used to yell at these two guys. I've known them a long time.
And they have a come. And they'll come, so.
Okay, so we're gonna table this until we get further information.
Can I make one more comment?
Sure.
If I may, since you're gonna do some sort of swale along that eastern portion, would you consider a different species of trees, something like a swamp oak or something a little bit more acclimated to water and wet?
Conditionally.
Yeah.
Conditionally. You tell me which one to put in there. Make a suggestion. How's that? Not today.
My suggestion would be like a swamp oak.
Okay.
White oak, something like that.
Something that will handle wet feet.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think your ground conditions aren't gonna be good.
You're not getting a willow or anything in there.
No.
I like these maple for that.
There is a maple. It's like a sun idios. I've got one of mine because I had a land come out and say where I have runoff goes east and west and north and south and at the bottom. And it thrives in the flood. And, but I gave one, I had two of them. I gave one to my neighbor of mine. It's, this one's twice as big as the other one.
I don't think that's gonna have water in it very long.
No, that's gonna, that's gonna get dry quick.
Yeah, I think so. I don't think, I don't think, I don't think you have a.
Well, we're, we're doing multiple spillways. We should probably do stone. Stone the whole thing, the swale. You know, when you think about it, but then again, above my pay, right? Let's, let's see what the engineers can figure out. So I guess we're meeting back here next Monday then?
I like grass. You can put stone in there, but grass is gonna hold your moisture better.
You didn't hear my question, did you Ben?
No.
Meeting here next Monday.
Well, the council will be here, which can't miss me.
Yeah, council. You can be here next Monday. That's a council meeting. It's okay.
All right, so we're, we're getting kicked out.
Yeah. Everybody in agreement?
I'm in.
Christie? Okay, all right. So we'll be talking further.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry we couldn't go.
If you want to change your mind at any time, now's, now's your time before I walk out.
Well, I, I realize your position.
Yeah, I know your.
But if you were the bank, you would have a different position.
No, we've got things to do. We understand that. But, you know, like I said, I'm gonna push as far as I can, maybe try a little further.
And even though the bank is in township property, we still have to have that.
We'll have the information to you very quickly. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. See you guys.
Thanks. Good luck. Okay, now, lines number nine, land split review, Fox properties. So again, we have the middle with incomplete information, so. I asked Brian what he thought. My request to the applicant was always to have a survey done on these two parcels. And we still don't have that, so.
So have you talked to Dan?
Many times.
Okay, so he knows you want that survey.
Is there anything else?
For months. Okay.
Months.
So is there anything else he needs to supply us?
No, I mean, that's it. And the, the reason that you need a survey is he's gone to the township and got the plot map drawings, but the plot map drawings oftentimes are incorrect and we can't go by those. We have to have a legal survey if we're gonna do a legal land split.
So I asked Bobby what they have. When I tell him he needs a survey, he'll, it won't be the first time he's heard it, then?
It would probably be somewhere as close to a dozen.
Okay.
So I told him numerous times and Becky told him oftentimes, so I mean, it's not that it was just me. And I explained to him why we needed it.
The biggest thing for you guys is, I mean, you can verify, or we can verify that it meets all the ordinance requirements based on the drawing that he's got here, but he's going to have to have that survey to legally record this with the county anyways.
You can't just go.
Oh, I did probably. Oh, so he's gonna need it anyway, no matter what?
Absolutely, he will need it.
You can't just take the property description that the township has and split it and do?
No, because to record the new parcel boundaries, you need a legal survey, and so.
So you're saying the county would, it would also requires a survey?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the Land Division Act requires that anytime you're, you're manipulating property boundaries also, you have a recordable survey to define a new legal boundary for any property. So, you know, you could approve it conditionally on the survey and the county accepting that survey, or you could not review it until he gets the survey. Either way, it's gotta be done. It's just whether you guys want to see it ahead of time or not.
How deep is this?
Two, definitely. It's shaped one like one thirty-eight and one forty-something.
Just for the people watching this on television, what this is, there's two pieces of property on Torrey Street. The ordinance requires a seventy-foot frontage and one parcel has, excuse me, has seventy-five point nine feet according to the township and sixty-five point nine feet on the other one. So what this would do would be to kind of combine the two lots and divide them in half so that they would both meet ordinance and you, they would both be buildable lots. So the one lot now is buildable, the other lot is not. So that's the reason for doing this and the reason that we're requiring the legal survey is, as been stated a couple of times this evening.
Does the buildable part come down to with knowing where the house, because again, with setbacks and side yard things set, maybe you have to know where, I mean, if you're already, already on the line or past the slot, let's say, for example, then this has got other issues in it.
Well.
Wait for structures on the park, on the property?
There is a structure on the property, but the parcel that I understand somebody wants to build on is the smaller of the two parcels.
Does he understand what you're meaning by?
Oh, yeah, he knows.
Because I'm, I'm reading this here. He doesn't, is he misconstruing that this is not the survey that he came for?
Oh, no, no, he's, he's not.
When are you reading this?
Because he's already talked to a survey.
Okay, okay. Well, and she has no question too, that he was just reminded again on the survey right here.
Oh, there is that?
Yeah, there's a notation from Becky that he was reminded again.
Yeah, need surveys. Yeah.
To answer your question about buildable, if that, if that structure were on the smaller of the parcels, he could still build something on the larger parcel without making any property boundary adjustments at all, so.
Because it looks like there's something on this, well, this one looks like there's something happening. The house is on the smaller. There's, there's a forty-eight by seventy-two.
Yeah, it's a milk house.
Milk house from nineteen forty-one.
Yeah, there's little homes in there.
Right, it's a milk house. If you went there on a Saturday morning, you could get chocolate milk and a spurt from a car. Trick or treat, get a piece of gum and a chocolate milk.
Yep. Mr. Justice Fox were really great members of our community.
It's okay, having discussed this, we're gonna table this one too.
I think we have some work.
So we talked a lot, about a lot of things and tabled everything. Except for the planes, the, the public hearing.
But everything, you had already asked for all this stuff. It was, there's nothing new.
Again.
Dan knows it, Mr. Thankier know you wanted the water.
Yes, yeah, we, we had a meeting, we discussed the water, we discussed the calculations. We, we discussed everything that we talked about, including the easement for the water line. So everything that we discussed that we're waiting for was discussed at previous meeting here in this office. Along with Mr. Fox. So I don't know if it doesn't count.
What do, what do we need on the? What do, what do we need on the, I've already forgot, what do we need on the rehabilitation center? Oh, the agreements for the easements are both, right, and that was talked about last time.
Exactly, yeah, so, and then we need a good drawing to go on record. Remember how I had my drawing and I took the magic marker, highlighter, and I highlighted all the different things? Excuse me.
You take care because we, we don't have anybody to fill that position.
I'm not playing that again. So, we highlighted, I highlighted every easement in different color. I'd like to kind of see something like that to go on record. So, it's not necessary, but it would just make it a whole lot easier if, if we did that.
And that way, if you did get two different, different owners, you're just possibly avoiding conflicts of the future.
Exactly, and we can't do that split. When we do the split, now we've created the problem.
Yeah.
We can't create a problem, we can only try to alleviate problems. If, if the terminology can be approved then?
No, no, I was going to say the other thing that we do in some other communities is require that those easements get written into the legal description of a property. You don't necessarily have to do that and your ordinance doesn't require it at this point in time, but that's another assurance that those easements are recorded with the county. They're documented with the property in perpetuity.
Well, that may be something they would want, you know, we're not requiring it, but.
Oh, we are. We're requiring this easement to be written, signed and registered at McComb County Register of Deeds. So, we are requiring that, whether it.
Whether it gets amended to the legal description or not.
Of the property, yeah. But we could request that.
You could. I mean, it, it is a small burden on the applicant, but it makes things a lot more clear that comes to selling property that, that those, those easements are written right in with the legal description rather than recorded as a separate easement.
So, they have to actually rewrite the legal description, okay. So, but those agreements need to go, not just, they, they need to go to our attorney, the village attorney, before they get filed. And once, and once they're approved by Mr. Pohorsky, then they would be okay to be filed. So, they could file them without it, but then they'd still need to be approved by Jeff before, because I wouldn't want to approve a legal thing, you know? So, I think that we need to do that, to follow those steps. So, and what we're doing really isn't so much for the applicant, it's for the person that comes after the applicant or the neighbor of the applicant. So, really, it might sound, I don't know. Not sure how it sounds to the viewing audience, but we're, we are trying to protect not just the applicant, but the surrounding properties also and future applicants or future owners.
Sounds like a good safeguard, what it sounds like.
Yes. Okay. Oh, Chair, we, or, there was something, a request and some information on the, on the lot split for item nine, but it just came in to the office Friday, I think, so nothing has happened with it, so, I'm not sure who it's from, but. It was just requests for information on this lot. So, here. Anything else to bring forward, Board? Ryan, thanks for coming. Thanks for your valuable assistance.
I enjoyed it. I, a little panicked of my, my aunt and uncle live in Shelby Township, so I stopped and saw them on the way up here and they said when I was a little boy, five years old, I stayed with them for a week and I visited, or they took me to the orchard right down the road. Yep, and they said we spent a day here and I had the time of my life, it seemed like, so I just thought that was funny.
These two, two guys that were here, that's their family's orchard, they're blinks and their moms are blinks, yeah.
Interesting, yeah, I didn't know that.
Where do you live?
I live in East Lansing right now.
Oh, that's right.
Moving down to Farmington Hills here pretty quick.
Because it is a great place to go, the orchards here.
Well, it sounds like I had a great time, so I need to come back.
Um, I'll move that way during the meeting.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
I.
I.
Chairman at 8:32.